Welcome, everyone, to the City Council Work Session for December 12th. We have actually a recent addition to our calendar, which is a public hearing in action. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. This particular action is an ordinance that allowing the Canostoga huts at vehicle campsites. And on December 10th, council directed staff to return today with a public hearing in action item for a temporary amendment to the car camping program to allow Canostoga huts for the purpose of overnight camping in sites designated for such a use. The city manager shall adopt rules regulating the minimum requirements to qualify as a Canostoga hut for purpose of this ordinance.
Okay, I'm going to open the public hearing. Do we have any? I'm going to close that public hearing. So, what we're going to do now is ask council president to put a motion on the table.
I move to adopt Council Bill 5083, an ordinance temporarily allowing Canostoga huts where camping in vehicles is now allowed.
Seconded.
Seconded. Discussion? Alan?
Mr. City Manager, the reason it's temporary is because the tent part was temporary, so this is just attaching, says temporary exception.
Right. What this provides is a sunset date of October 1st, 2013. Part of the reason for doing that is as we get experience with these, it may be that we will want to change it, maybe it just gets merged in along with the tent camping if the council decides that tents should be made permanent.
Right, okay. So it'll come back to us for further review in October, before October?
Right.
With more information about how they work.
Right. It will probably come back to you next summer, so there's time to, for you to either extend it, make it permanent, or let it lapse.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other questions, comments?
And Mayor, if I can add one more thing, just for the public to know, that the ordinance doesn't allow this to happen immediately. First, the administrative rules need to be adopted by the city manager before somebody would be able to actually place one of these at one of the car camping sites. We anticipate that the rules will get adopted very quickly, but it won't be today.
Do we know how long we think that's going to be?
Probably within the next week or so.
Okay. All right. Thank you for that information. All right, I think we're ready to vote on this. All those in favor, please indicate. Six in favor and none in opposition. It passes. Thank you all.
Listen, Pat.
I know.
She said he'd be a little late, and of course George is still recovering, so.
We're going on to our other work session item, that's the City Hall update. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor, and I don't suppose there's any chance that this will go quite as quickly as that last ordinance, but you don't know, you just don't know. So I'm going to ask Christie to come up and lead our conversation on this topic.
Thanks, Tom. Well, today's an important day, 12:12 at noon. Yeah, 12:12 at noon.
And then the six minutes will be just weird, right? 12:12, 12:12.
Anyways, today is an important day in that it's sort of the completion of a lot of excellent work that was done over the last few months with respect to the City Hall discussion, site selection, evaluation. Just to remind folks where we've been, we started in July with an update from the two architects that were on the City Hall Citizen Advisory Committee, who presented you with some information about the possibilities of a build new, or a renovate, or rebuild, I guess, as we call it, option for the existing City Hall site. At the time that we evaluated those two options, we also learned that E-Web was also another opportunity that we needed to consider. And as a result of that discussion, you formed a council subcommittee. And to remind folks, the council subcommittee members were Counselor Pryor, Counselor Zelenka, and Counselor Clark. And I just want to take a minute to thank the three of those counselors for the work that they did this fall. It was really helpful to have their input, and I think that you accomplished a lot of great things in helping us evaluate all of the options. During the course of the five meetings that they had, we also came back to the full council at three separate occasions to talk about giving an update on what the group was doing, talked about the values and the criteria used to evaluate the three options, and also talked with you a little bit about values. The last group session that we had was on December 4th. At that time, we had a workshop and a really thoughtful discussion that started with some survey information that we collected with, from you, to see where you were in terms of your expression of, and interpretation of the values as we were applying those to the three different options that were before you. And from a staff perspective, I think that was one of the most valuable conversations that we've ever had, and I think that as we move forward, that will help us and be very informed about, you know, design and things that we need to be thinking about regardless of where we head. Parallel to that, those discussions that were happening, the staff team worked very hard to get public input and gather public input in a variety of different ways. Two public open houses were held, one on December 7th and one on December 10th. About 40 people attended those sessions, and the vast majority of those, and I think that we had a board, did you? This is a summary of the information that we received from those sessions. Sorry, we didn't get that to you beforehand. But the vast majority of the folks who attended those did seem to have a preference for the existing City Hall site, although there was a lot of difference of opinion about what to do on that site, so I think that that's very consistent with the conversation that we've been having over the past few months. This board, have you been, just put it up. So this board.
Be easel.
Yeah. So this board represents, we let them put some dots on their options and what they were considering at the open houses, and so that just sort of reflects that, and we'll get that, we're waiting for an easel to be able to put that up. But it's sort of just, it's very telling, I think, about that there's, I think the three options are all really good, and that's really reflective of that as we move forward.
Are those, each one dot is a person? Or?
Is it just one person?
Three dots.
Yeah, so they got a.
Person got three dots.
Yeah, so they got a chance to.
Dot load if they wanted to.
So that's just a couple dozen people?
It's about 40. 30, 40? Yeah. Yeah. So in addition to the open houses, you also had a forum on December 10th. About 17 people shared their thoughts with you about that. Again, the vast majority, I think, had a site preference for the existing City Hall site, although I know at least two shared preference for the E-Web site, and another couple folks suggested alternate use such as a shelter for that site. And so, the input that we've gathered along the way has been excellent, and we've also kept our website updated for people to access more detailed information. In addition to doing our public outreach, we actually received requests from different groups within the community to come and speak about the options. The groups that had presentations on City Hall were the Downtown Rotary Group, Otto Petisha actually did that presentation and provided a group an overview of the work that the Citizen City Hall Advisory Committee completed, and he specifically talked about the rebuild option on that site. And we had Mike Penwell, our Design and Construction Manager, met with two groups, the City of Eugene Historic Review Board and the DEI, and I think it was a blend of DEI and chamber members, and presented the options and received feedback. And then, last but definitely not least, was a really good conversation at Eugene City Club that Counselor Clark, Mike Penwell, and Otto Petisha participated in. Mike Penwell did sort of the objective overview of the options, and then Counselor Clark and Otto Petisha did an excellent job of talking about the different benefits of both sites and the different opportunities that were available. One of the things that this really points to is the high-low of interest, I think, in the community and the decision that you're making as we move forward. I think that the community interest in this topic has been outstanding, and I think it's telling about how important a City Hall is to this community, whether it be large or small, and where the location is does seem to really, to matter to folks. In addition, I want to thank the staff team for being able to get all of this work done. We had a pretty aggressive timeline, especially with the public input gathering process, and I just think the staff team did a phenomenal job, and just wanted to take a minute to thank them. So lastly, before I turn the conversation over to you, I think you're at a really important point to make and poised to make a decision and give us direction to help us move forward. We are ready and to have a team to return back in January with some sort of a timeline and get more feedback about the design. I think that the fun part of the process is actually, as we start getting into talking about the design and how we apply what we learned from the values conversation to building a design that works for our community as we move forward. And with that, I'd just like to end with our comment that whatever choice you make, we're ready to make it great and we're ready to move, so. With that, I'll turn it over to you all for conversation.
Thank you for that. I'm going to call on Claire first, because she wants to make, declare a potential.
Yeah, so I just wanted to take this moment to advise the city attorney to declare a potential conflict of interest regarding this conversation. My husband works at Rye Restaurant, which is just a couple blocks from E-Web, and we also have a small financial investment in the restaurant itself, so I just wanted to get that out there.
For that, Betty, you're next.
Thank you. I'm delighted that we're finally making a decision. I think it's really urgent, it's urgent that we get started on the work, and I, it's no secret that I favor rebuild, or remodel, or whatever you want to call it, but I think there've been some really good arguments, actually, some of the same ones that I said the time, the first time Mike spoke at City Club, and I did a rebuttal about a year or two and a half ago, I think. And, anyway, I think the reasons remain the same, why we should stay where we are, for it to be a presence downtown, to not leave an empty spot downtown, to be convenient for everybody, including people who ride buses, who would have a hard time, I think, walking from E-Web at night. And also because it would be our building. And I don't know if it's time for a motion yet or not, is it all right to make a motion about the?
I think Counselor Brown's going to make a motion in a little while.
About the location?
He is.
Okay.
He's prepared to do so. Go ahead, Mike.
Thanks, Mayor, very much. One of the great benefits of the opportunity to serve in this capacity is learning the ability to read tea leaves. And I've learned to do that pretty well, and I understand where this is going today. I do want to say, though, that I genuinely believe, I know that my colleagues, who I respect greatly, disagree with me on this, and that's fine, we get to do that, but I do believe one day folks will look at the opportunity we had and say, what were they thinking? I really do. I think they're going to look at the chance we had and wonder how we could have missed it. I really do. But be that as it may, I recognize where the majority here and where the numbers are and where the community is, so I hope what we'll do now is get on to the decision of how to do this at the current location. That's what I sense we're going to be doing today. And in that regard, I really think we've done our community a disservice by not putting more focus and more attention on some historic references in our community. And so, for that reason, I hope we'll strongly consider Otto Petisha's idea of rebuilding that shell. I obviously believe E-Web's the better choice, but I don't think that's going to happen today. So when we get to the current location, I hope that my colleagues will consider that option.
At the risk of, and I'm not saying this to be a smart mouth at all, Mike, I'm really just saying that I'm hoping that they won't ask what we were thinking, but I hope they will say they were thinking. They may have thought, they may have thought about different things, and they may have thought about it in different ways, but everybody was engaged and participating and really trying to do the best they could to come to a good place, and you're part of the discussion, it's been a real contribution to that.
Thank you, Mayor.
I've got Claire, and then Chris, and then Alan.
Yeah, well, I agree with Counselor Clark, the tea leaves are becoming clear, but, you know, I've been advocating for us to consider, choose the E-Web site, because I think it, right at this moment, presents a real combination of specific things, the economic value that we would see from being able to gain the square footage at a price point we can afford that exceeds what we'd have at the Eighth and Olive, excuse me, the Eighth and Pearl location, and to, at the same time, take advantage of that opportunity to create a riverfront civic center, which I think would be such an important enhancement to our community, and would be a place that would be embraced as, you know, on a spot that is currently embraced as one of our premier spots in the city in terms of Alton Baker Park right there. But I also do really understand the perspective of those who want to retain our current site and the issue of staying downtown and continuing to support downtown. And I really want to thank everyone who's been working on this, from the staff and the committee, and folks who've worked on this in the past, and I really appreciate Counselor Clark's effort to create some dialogue around E-Web as a viable option. I do think that was a real service for us, even if we don't choose that site, because I believe that even if we choose the Eighth and Pearl site, I'm hoping that folks in the community who want to see us return to the river in a real way will continue to work with E-Web, on a plan to create an exciting, vibrant, public riverfront district that may not have City Hall there, but will still embrace the characteristics that I was envisioning if we were to put a City Hall there. You know, I think the input we got from the public really shows that we do have good choices, and there's not necessarily a super-strong feeling that we choose one versus the other, and there's good reasons to choose either site. So I appreciate being able to be a part of this decision and all the thoughtfulness that has gone into it, and no matter which way we go, I think we will move forward to have a great City Hall.
Thank you. Chris?
Thank you. I guess I can appreciate and expect the fact that a decision that is going to impact our community for 100 years should not be an easy decision to make, and that's exactly the situation we're in. Having been on the subcommittee that studied all of these options, I agree, any of them would have worked, and would have worked to the credit of our city. So it becomes a matter of saying, which one of these choices would be the one that in 100 years, if it's a matter of what were they thinking, or is it a matter of what best reflects what our community needs to be in the next 100 years, I think that is what will be the basis for the decision, at least for me. But probably the most significant element in this very, very important choice is the fact that this body is making this choice in the best possible way. I cannot express how well I am pleased with the way this body has arrived. They've been thoughtful, they've had a subcommittee, they've studied the options, the staff has been supportive, we have talked about it in a very, very effective way, we've weighed the choices, we've understood where things are going, and we have moved together as a collaborative body. That is no better thing you can say about our city than the fact that its leaders are making this decision the way they're making this decision, and so whichever way we go, I think the people of Eugene can be confident that their leaders have thought about this decision very carefully, and whatever it is they arrive at, knowing some will like it and some won't, they can at least say they got there the right way. And for me, that's a very significant aspect of what we're going to decide.
Alan?
So I'd like to thank staff for the work that they've done in this, especially Mike and Christie, they've done a really nice job of helping us work through this process. And I'd like to thank Mike for unifying the community.
Bringing Kevin and Sue.
Yeah, disparate people came together.
Easy to do.
And I agree with Counselor Pryor that the deliberation that we took was very open, and it was one that we can look at and say, it had a good discussion about it. And the conversation, while having disagreements, was very civil at all times, and I think that's something that the city can be proud of, not only by the council, but also by the community. I do favor the existing site, and have. I'm intrigued by both the build new and the rebuild options, and I 100% agree that this is a 100-year decision, and that's the way we need to be thinking about this. And when we think about that, I think we need to think about what that building means and also what it costs, and I really would like the council to consider, when we look at this coming up in January, of making this an example of energy efficiency and what a building could be from a sustainability perspective. About 85% of the cost and the energy use of a building is related to its ongoing operations, and only about 15% related to the building construction of it or demolition. So it's really about the long-term, how this building gets operated, that when we talk about fiscal responsibility, we need to have that be in consideration, because this is going to be a 100-year building, I think. But it also is an opportunity for us to reshape what City Hall means by not only having it be an example of energy efficiency and sustainability, but also adding those amenities to it within the budget that we have, or the potential for amenities, so that people feel connected to City Hall and also feel connected to the city. A public forum place to have meetings, also potentially the farmer's market, and a plaza that could be a place where people would gather. I think all those things can be incorporated into this, so that's the opportunity I look at with this, with this new City Hall project at the current site.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, you know, back in September of 2010, I sat in the back row watching this council debate today. And it was interesting to see back then, I thought we were on a relatively fast track, by all accounts, you know, two years maybe is a fast track, but it's been a lengthy process to get us to this point. Sometimes you may see me tap, tap, tapping notes, and I tapped, tapped notes that day, and I tapped, tapped a few quotes from that day, which is, came out in an article in the Register Garden. You know, it's interesting that people pretty much said the same thing then that they're saying today, you know, while people may have gone one way and then the other. Counselor Clark was pretty set on E-Web at the time, and Counselor Taylor was pretty set on rebuilding the old City Hall at the time, and Counselor Pryor was pretty set on being okay moving into a trailer.
Only temporarily.
Temporarily, while we phase in rebuilding of City Hall. So it's great to be at this point, and I wonder that I've been a part of it. For myself, I've been on both sides of the fence, you know, initially I thought that the only thing to do was to rebuild, to bulldoze and rebuild from scratch, but hearing more and more input from Otto and from Mike and from others over the course of the last two years, there's a great deal to be said for the E-Web site. There's a great deal to be said for rebuilding as much of the City Hall as we currently have, and there's a great deal to be said with starting from scratch. So I think we were left with three not-bad choices on this, and I think that 50 years from now, while people may say, what were they thinking, there'll be people who say, I'm glad they thought what they were thinking. And it will be Eugene, and there'll be, if it's 50% plus one that still agree, then we're in pretty good shape. So.
Totally different then.
2020. So it's, you know, historically, we've gone through quite a process on this, and I hope that, and I do expect that people understand that it has been a process and that it has been deliberative, and that seven members of this council, City Council, myself not being one of those seven, excuse me, six members of the people sitting here, two of us not being a part of that, have been, have looked at every angle on this and said a lot of different things about it, and finally came to today. And I think if nothing else, whether or not people agree with what we decide today, one thing that I cannot disagree with is that this has been deliberative, and that the mayor and the council have done a very good job of working with the city manager and staff in getting us to this point. And I'm very proud to have been first an observer, then a participant, and soon to be, once again, an observer. So it's, I think you've all done a very good job. The E-Web site, as Counselor Sorette says, has great opportunity for the future. That entire strip of river, 50 years from now, I think people will say, wow, Eugene is beautiful, isn't it? I really expect that's going to happen. So the last thing I have to say about that is good work to everyone who's been involved in this process.
Before I turn to George for his comments and to put a motion on the table, I would like to say that I really appreciate, and I think I hear around the table, that we all care about historical references, that that matters to all of us, and that connections to the community are important to all of us. And I did want to say thank you to E-Web, and I did want to appreciate the comments that came before us the other night about whatever decision that we make will still be friends, and that they intend to stay there, and that they intend to preserve public space. All of those things are very important to me. And I also want to reflect on whether it, no matter what decision we make, I think all of this has been done in a context of understanding the budgetary constraints that we have, whether you're talking about phasing in, rebuilding, or even when we were talking about going to E-Web, all of those are in mind, we're all keeping in mind the huge responsibility we have to be very careful in our use of public funds, and very careful in trying to stay within what we have the capacity to do right now. And I really want to reflect to the public that we hear that, and we will live that in our budget decisions, but we will also live that in the decisions we make about what we're doing with this particular project. So I just wanted to appreciate all of that, and I actually look forward too to the discussion of our riverfront. That's a huge, our folks are hardly in that conversation yet, so that's something exciting that's out in front of us right now, and so we'll look forward to that discussion too. I'm sure that will be equally as vigorous and equally as engaging about how we see our, the future of our community.
Probably. Thanks, Mayor. Well, I too, I'd like to thank staff for presenting us all the good information. I'd like to thank Counselors Clark, Zelenka, and Pryor for their work on the subcommittee and studying all that and honing it down a little more for us. We've got three options, two sites, and so today we're at the first gate of this long decision-making course that we set up for ourselves, and so I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to clarify the intent so that staff can continue drilling down on one of the three, well, two of the three possibilities. I move to direct the city manager to complete the analysis for the rebuild and build new options for a new City Hall on the current City Hall site.
Second.
That's fairly explanatory, I don't, I'll speak farther to it, I'd just be repeating comments that I made when we last spoke about this. My vote on this will reflect my initial feeling that I think we should be at the E-Web site, but I do hope we get into this further discussion. My understanding, though, Mayor, was that you were hopeful we would narrow down to one option today. Do I have that right?
Not other three options, one site.
I thought we were making a decision by the 12th. I thought that's what we've been discussing this entire time, so the only thing we're doing is eliminating the E-Web option today?
Yeah.
We have this self-imposed deadline simply to stop considering one option? Well, that seems like an interesting sort of decision. I thought this was a process where we were going to make a decision rather than just eliminate one option. That's unfortunate from my perspective.
Well, yeah, I think that was the original intent, but I think getting us down to one site allows us to focus in on the trade-offs between those two options, and I think they're both intriguing to me, and frankly, I haven't made up my mind yet which one makes the most sense. I need to get a little bit more detail about how each of those would play out and what it would look like, and so I have a series of questions that I would like answered, but I won't take up the time now, but I think this is the right way to go for right now, and come back and have this conversation again.
Claire, and then Chris, and then Betty.
I understand your consternation, Counselor Clark, but I do recall at our last meeting about this, Counselor Zelenka did preview the suggestion of making a site selection at this meeting, so maybe you didn't interpret it the same way.
I didn't know he was in charge, that's interesting.
Well, I think it's about who puts the motion out. I am still in support of considering the E-Web site, so I will not be supporting the motion because of that perspective, but I wouldn't also feel prepared to decide between a rebuild and a complete new building today, given the information that I have so far about those two options, so I'll be not supporting the motion.
Chris?
When the subcommittee met and talked about a variety of ways to kind of approach this, one of the ideas that I had talked about was, is this a site issue or is this a building issue? And we talked about if it's a building issue, then we're talking about three different choices, as Counselor Clark says. But if this is a site issue, then we're talking about two choices. So is this a building issue? So is this a building issue or a site issue? And I was a proponent of the building issue, because I kind of came at this as we're choosing between the three buildings that we want to perhaps live in. But within the committee, and even when we brought this to the council, my sense was that the conversation was going, "Yeah, you know what, we really need to decide the site first." And so my sense, what I was hearing was, we really want to try to make a site decision, since location, location, location is where these kind of real estate decisions often boil down to. So it may not have been my first choice, but what I thought I was hearing was, let's get the site decided, and if it's this site, there's only one choice there. If it's this site, there just happens to be two choices there, but what I was hearing was, we need to make the site choice and then go to the building choice after that. So my sense is we're going along with at least what I thought I heard in the discussion.
Well, certainly the site choice was the important first step, but I thought we could do that and do the other at the same meeting. I don't see why we couldn't do both, but it's, obviously we have to choose a site before we talk about what we're going to do.
Well, certainly you can do whatever you choose to do, but I do believe that what I personally heard at the last meeting was that we wanted to go through the gate of figuring out which site first, and then really have a thorough examination of the possibilities of the deep rebuild or the new, and vet that thoroughly, and then, and I appreciate, actually, the desire to move along, because I certainly admire myself.
Well, Mayor, I think there are several issues that could still use to be vetted. It's why through the entire first several weeks of this process, I suggested that we not set ourselves an artificial deadline, that we wait until the new council was seated, and so that we had the new people involved, because this is a 100-year decision, not, you know, my friend, Mr. Farr here, there's anything personal about that. But with the new council, I advocated for quite some time that we slow down and look at this intelligently and appropriately, and I'm not sure that we have vetted with the entire community all parts of this. It seems a lot to me like it's been rushed through to eliminate this option, because everything I heard throughout that process was, we need to make a decision by the end of the year, and I specifically heard that from you, Mayor. And so we're not doing that today, clearly. So I, and this is the first I've heard of it. So I mean, I heard their comments, and Alan and Chris's suggestions, and I made suggestions as well, but this is the first time I've heard us come to a place where we're actually saying, "Well, we didn't really mean it, we're not going to make a decision today."
So I was originally a building person too, and said we shouldn't do a site selection, we should pick one of these three, but then I came to realize that it really makes more sense to do a site selection, and expressed that opinion last time, so I think this is the right way to go. I did want to point out that while Councilor Pollings not here, and I don't pretend to speak for him, but on the record, he's said that he favors the current site as well. So I think what I would like to see when we come back is a more detailed analysis and talk to both the two architects, Raul and Paticia, about those two sites, and get a better feel of the potentials for those two things and how they would work, and get that a little clearer. Even after looking at all these things for the last, and being on the council committee, I'm still not exactly sure what they were saying to us and what's the potential possibilities for each. So I think reexamining that one more time and then making this decision is probably benefits the council, and it also gives the public a little bit more opportunity to weigh in on the build versus, new versus rebuild.
I would actually appreciate when we, just decided to do both the way we're going, and we come back with the two possibilities. I have a sense of the need for community connection, and while I totally agree with you that one of the central features of a City Hall should be the forum for public conversation and decision-making, but I also think there are other possibilities, like Alan talked about earlier in terms of community meeting room, or farmer's markets, or those kinds of things. I don't think we've thought about those really very thoroughly in terms of those two options, and so I would like to have, I'd like to think about those things in terms of how they would play out in one of the other of those.
I'm hoping we'll have that discussion. And I don't see anybody else in the queue, so I think we're ready to vote on this. All those in favor, please indicate. One, two, three, four, five, in opposition, two passes. Thank you. And we are still a few minutes, so if there's anything that you want, any more direction you want to give them on the next step, I'm sure they'd be happy to hear that.
I move that we choose to, that we favor the choice of moving forward with a rebuilt option as opposed to the build-new option.
Second.
Move and seconded. Alan?
Move to table.
No debate.
If there's a second.
There's a second.
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor, please indicate. Two in favor, in opposition. One, two, three, four, five, goes down, it's not table.
In fairness, we've been studying this, and we've been working on this, neither we've done a thorough job or we haven't, and if we haven't, then we should leave all three options on the table to kind of sneak up on it this way, just to eliminate one option with a false deadline is really kind of silly. Either we should consider this, or we should make a decision. We've kind of, you know, been saying for quite a while, we're going to make a decision, so I think we ought to do so, and I'm certainly prepared to do that. That's why I was trying to make reconciliatory comments when I started, because I thought we were all going to behave that way.
I just want to make sure I get some clarification. If the motion passes, what our intent would be, what we would hear is that we want to do a remodel or a rebuild of it. I just want to make sure people understand that the concept that's been presented so far may or may not be the final product on a renovation, deep rebuild, remodel kind of a project. So I just, I want to make it clear that that isn't the final product, but it could be the starting point for a conversation of how do we renovate, rebuild, or remodel the facility. That's what I would be taking away from it, so I just want to ensure that that would be other people's understanding.
My motion meant, was our focus.
Mine too.
I'm confused now about who wants to talk, and who was just saying that's what I meant. Anyone want to talk? Yes, okay, so Claire, and then Chris, and then K.
Well, part of the reason I supported the motion table was because I was hoping to get more information about both, more deep information about both options, partly I came to the process a little bit late. But I guess, since this motion is on the table, to the comments that the mayor made about the potential for co-locating a farmer's market or some other civic enhancements besides just the core functions of a City Hall, do you anticipate that that could be something that might be folded into the rebuild option as we explore it further?
I'll comment, and you're more than welcome to. I think that's all part of the conversation that says if we want to, if the intent is is to rebuild, remodel, renovate the existing, I think part of the conversation will be is, how do we do that, and are there other objectives you also want to accomplish within that? And so that's part of what we would then work towards on a design phase of that, and I think it would be everything from, are there those kinds of facilities, are there other common areas, what would that look like? And so, and phasing, how does it get phased in? So all of that would be a part of that conversation, and it may be able to accommodate it or not depending on where you choose to go with the design of it.
If we simply vote no on this motion, we preserve the two options we have right now. We can keep moving forward with one site with two options and continue to study it. If we vote yes now, we've narrowed it down to one choice, which is what some of us want, but it may not be the best choice. So I'm going to not vote for the motion, not because I don't think that rebuilding is a viable option, but I'd like to have more input on both of the options before I make up my mind. I don't want to be forced into that choice right now in order to make a statement. So I will vote no, and it will simply be to preserve the choice that we have right now.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, as tempting as it is to precipitate every vote or every decision to my final council meeting, I'm afraid I'm going to have to vote against this. I think we're at a point right now where the manager needs to present more detailed information regarding the rebuild or complete-from-scratch buildup. I, once again, two years ago, I was saying, knock it down, build from scratch, but I've heard a lot more in the meantime, and to me, there are a lot more options that this council, this upcoming council, has to weigh in before making the final decision. So I think while being deliberative can slow things down, in this case, I believe being deliberative is bringing it to the point where we'll have a better decision. So I will reluctantly vote against the motion, because I would like to get this taken care of before I'm gone, but I'll watch from sidelines.
We leave a lot of options open if we vote for this motion. All we do is do one more elimination, we eliminate demolition, and then there's still a lot to talk about, and a lot of decisions to be made, and it pushes us a little closer to getting something done, which we really need to do. And also, this is a monumental case of where I agree with Mike Clark, so you should all vote for it.
Do we have abstain as an option?
I'm actually in favor, at this juncture, in favor of the rebuild, but I'm also, I think this is a really important decision, and I think we should take the moment and let everybody have their chance to look at those options and make their decision. I don't think one more meeting of discussing this is going to hold us up, and I think it's kind of respectful of everybody getting the information, they need to feel comfortable with the decision. So I would really encourage you to, well, move along expeditiously, but really, I think this is, City Hall's a kind of important decision, and all of us being as close as we can, going on the same page is a really important thing. So I would just caution you to think of it that way, as not a thumbs up or thumbs down on the rebuild, but it's a really sort of respectful moment of letting your fellow colleagues actually have time to really look at both of those options, and then move forward. That would be my best advice.
Ready to vote on Councilor Clark's motion? All those in favor? Three in favor, in opposition. Four in opposition, it goes down, and so we will thank everybody for the conversation and take this knock from the right out and get back for the New Year.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.